Pointing it to them or to?
Pointing it to here.
Yeah.
We're just pointing it to everybody. Actually, if you could stand in the corner, then they can see too. Okay, so first I would like to address a rumor that is kind of going around town. No one received a million dollars or more for the 2023 water contamination settlement. There's a rumor and I can see how that could happen. Because the Chronicle put that a $6 million settlement was done and so that rumor got spread. I reluctantly did accept $6,000 to settle that case for the three years and thousands of hours of my time so that other people could sue if they desired. Working one month as a maternal newborn nurse would have been much easier for me. So I did use that money toward the community water awareness yard signs that were appreciated by the residents two summers ago. So as you can see on the first board there, this board addresses my position that during the water case, the city fraudulently and unlawfully withheld critical documents shown on this board plus thousands more during the discovery process of our case filed in 2020. I am certain the entire trajectory of that case would have changed if we knew that metric tons of foundry sand containing extremely toxic metal shavings were dumped inside and outside the five acre facility in our Sycamore residential area. Next board, please. The second board includes a few pages of thousands of documents and images evidence of what was hidden from us, the waste that came from Sloan Valve, the Illinois company where this highly poisonous foundry sand originated. Sloan Valve produces an abundant number of fixtures for industrial restrooms. Because of this knowledge, we have become more aware of their products housed in most public restrooms throughout the United States and even around the world. Next board, please. This board demonstrates that if just one sugar packet worth of just the lead dust contaminant found in the Harvester Square Way site was spread thinly across an entire football field, it would require special decontamination. City officials Brian Gregory and Bill Nicholas and the EPA were fully aware that 2 million cups worth of neurotoxic and carcinogenic waste was dumped at not only this site but neighboring properties on Edward and South Streets and Park Avenue. This catastrophic emergency was discovered between 1995 and 1996. It was not immediately addressed but rather left for years allowing it to travel through the city and beyond. Number four, please. Because lead and chromium six do not break down into safer as they sit in the soil, anytime the dirt is disrupted for any reason, toxic dust is created and allowed to spread again and again for many years. These are examples of the many ways that lead dust and other contaminants have the means to travel many miles from the original site. Wind, rain, snow, floods, foot traffic, clothing, pets, stormwater outfalls, and creek beds are just a few. This board also includes the Department of Toxic Substance Control Lead Spread Model, which provides the terrifying reality of the situation. For this purpose, we show the lowest and the highest levels of lead detected in the May 1997 toxic waste dumps, or the samples. This model concludes that the lowest sample of 1,500 milligrams per kilogram is a 436% increase and the highest sample of 4,400 milligrams per kilogram is a 1,471% increase from the 280 milligrams per kilogram Center for Disease Control exposure through inhalation, ingestion, and incidental contact action limits. It is shameful that it took more than 29 years for residents to uncover Sycamore's secret that has harmed thousands. Next word, please. This display shows a fraction of the evidence of the city and the EPA making great efforts to hide this information from the residents, the ones that when they assumed their roles promised to promote the welfare and the safety of them. These are only a few examples of many circumstances of the manipulation of words used to omit the truth. Bill Nicholas and Brian Gregory are mentioned. Their names are on hundreds of these EPA filed documents. They knew all of it and chose to say nothing. Withholding truth in this circumstance is the most harmful and consequential form of a lie. Despite both the city and the EPA having full knowledge of this catastrophic situation, it is my position that in 2023 and 2024, to save face so that residents believed the city was doing something about the water. They received grant money and replaced nearly 400 lead service lines. This decision was not only deceitful but extremely irresponsible. Disrupting the soil in a contaminated city is the absolute worst thing that they could have done. People have asked me, since I moved away to protect my family, why I still care? The answer is very simple. My friends, my family, and members of the community where I've lived most of my life are very likely affected by this. My family is very affected by this. When people are exposed to these levels of toxic metals, they don't just leave the body nor do their effects on the people's lives just because they move away. We will no longer allow this to be the decades-long buried secret that it has been. Let's have Sycamore's new motto be, "Life offers more because the people came together in 2020 and they continue to fight for truth and transparency, pursuing the health and well-being for this and future generations." This is not the end of the story, it is just the beginning. Thank you.
Now, are you going to speak on the same subject or did you cover anything that you wanted to have covered?
No, I'm going to speak on the same subject.
Okay, would you like?
I believe I also say I'm next.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And we'll need your name and address, please. Yeah, well, no, I think she was here.
She wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to swear you in.
Okay.
Do you swear that the comments you're going to give this council are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Richardson and I live. Due to my limited time to speak before you today, I will be covering two of the most concerning toxins in this hazardous waste, lead and hexavalent chromium, also known as chromium six. According to the Mayo Clinic, lead poisoning occurs when lead builds up in the body, often over months or years. Even small amounts of lead can cause serious health problems. It can severely affect mental and physical development. There is absolutely no threshold where exposure to lead is considered safe. Lead affects nearly all areas of the body, the brain, bones, and muscles, blood, kidneys, hearing, as well as the cardiovascular, reproductive, and digestive systems. According to the National Institutes of Health, lead exposures can cause generational health issues affecting not only directly exposed individuals and their children, but also their grandchildren through inheritable epigenetic changes. Lead is stored in the teeth, bones, musculoskeletal systems of children and adults who sustain chronic lead exposure. This exposure and direct exposure during pregnancy can interfere with the development of the baby's brain and nervous system, causing lifelong learning or behavioral problems as a child grows. Early exposure to even low levels of lead can induce outcomes affecting attention, comprehension, decision-making, intelligence, memory, and neurological disorders that mimic mental health conditions, including depression, panic, and anxiety disorders, phobias, bipolar disorder, antisocial aggressive behaviors, impulsivity, attention deficits, disruption in mood regulation, and decision-making, and even schizophrenia. These effects can span from childhood into adulthood. Though lead has the greatest effect on the neurological system, it is classified as a probable human carcinogen with evidence suggesting it may contribute to cancers of stomach, kidney, lung, brain, and pancreas. Moving on to the other hexavalent chromium, also known as chromium six, which you may recognize some as this toxin from the Aaron Brockovich movie. According to the Center for Disease Control, chromium six can enter the body through breathing it in, ingesting it in food, or water, or direct contact with skin. The Environmental Protection Agency, the agency that overseen this toxic site for nearly 23 years, states the respiratory tract is the major target organ for chromium six toxicity for short-term and long-term inhalation exposures. Shortness of breath, coffee and wheezing, perforations and ulcerations of the septum, bronchitis, increased pulmonary function, pneumonia, and other respiratory effects have been noted from chronic exposure. Inhalating this toxic metal is most linked in increased risk of lung, nasal, and sinus cancers. Chronic exposure through ingestion is linked to increased risk of esophageal, stomach, and colon cancers. As a professional mental health counselor, I can clearly say that this information given here in regards to the effects of exposure to these toxins are likely widespread and not only affect the individuals who have been exposed, but their family's mental health as well. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Noel Smith. And I'm going to read what my daughter wrote. To the members of the city council, my name is Megan Marie Smith and I'm here tonight through me, not just as a resident, but as a mother who lived through a nightmare that should never have happened in our community. Years ago, when my daughter was just a little girl, her doctor ordered a routine blood test. Something every parent assumes will come back normal, but it didn't. The results showed that she had lead in her blood. I cannot describe the fear and the heartbreak that came next. As our home, we tore our home apart looking for answers. We researched everything, what lead was, where it hides, what it does to a child's body, the pipes that paint the soil, even her toys. We stopped letting her play outside or touch anything that wasn't freshly scrubbed. We done our best to protect her from a danger we couldn't see or control. We stripped away her normal life. For weeks, my daughter lived in tears. Like she was in a bubble, we were terrified. We were afraid of the dust and the particles that could be in our air. Every breeze felt like a threat. We worried that something as simple as her playing in the yard or walking around the block could expose her to more lead or toxins. No child should ever have to be kept indoors because the air outside might not be safe. When her second test came back positive, the doctor said, "DCFS will have to get involved." I was shocked and angry. We are not negligent parents. We were desperate, loving parents, doing everything humanly possible to protect our child. We hired a professional to test our home's paint and the environment. There was no lead. Then came the devastating discovery. The lead wasn't in our home, it was in our water. Our daughter was being poisoned by something as innocent and routine as bath time. Every night as we tried to care for her, the water that we trusted was silently harming her. With new discoveries of the dumping grounds yards away from our home, we have come to find that our initial concerns about air quality were also correct and true. What makes this even more painful is that I had raised concerns about our water two years before the city acknowledged any issues. For two years, I was dismissed. I was told I was the only one having the problems and I was made to feel like I was crazy. But I wasn't crazy. I was a mother listening to her instincts, trying to protect her child and being ignored by the very people responsible for ensuring our safety. The emotional toll that this took on our family cannot be overstated. The guilt, the sleepless nights, the endless questions, wondering if lasting damage had been done, wondering how long it had been happening, wondering why no one listened. Our family's story is not an isolated incident. It's a symptom of a system that failed to act, failed to communicate, and failed to protect. And I'm here tonight to ask for accountability, transparency, and above all, a change. No family should ever have to go through what we went through. No parent should be made to feel crazy for speaking up about something that turns out to be true. We trusted our city to provide safe, clean water and air. That trust was broken. It's time to make sure that that never happens again. Thank you for your time and for hearing my story. Sincerely, Megan Marie Smith, 616 South Cross, Sycamore. As a side note, as her mother and as my granddaughter's grandmother, I also had gone to the city when my grandmother was still alive for years complaining about the city water. And we were all told, "It's your water heater, it's your house, it's nothing with the city's water." Guess what? It was.
Good evening, Amber Puttino. Lived in DeKalb County my entire life. Other than a couple of months, I lived in St. Charles when I was a teenager. Want to start by saying I've known Jen Campbell my whole life and went to school with her. Everybody that went to school with her would know her to be somebody that didn't want to start drama, didn't want to be the center of attention, just honest, good person. So when she was contacting me, contacting me with these concerns, I knew it had to be something pretty serious. I did not join the lawsuit against the city because I knew we hadn't identified the root cause yet. I knew whatever was going forward, there was no actual proof that it was coming from the water or what was going on, other than these independent tests. Jen started posting on Facebook about this Harvester Square toxic site. And I'm a busy mom, I'm a business owner, and I don't go on social media much anymore, but I saw a couple of the posts and I thought, huh, what's that about? It took her posts coming through in my dreams to put everything together because I'm a regulatory affairs specialist. I am a regulatory affairs subject matter expert, but because I was so busy with life, her posts kind of went in one and out the other. But my subconscious was putting it together. And so I contacted her recently and I said, Jen, can you send me what you're talking about for this Harvester Square site? I want to look at the files. So she sent me, and I have this script here, but I'm just going to try to wing this because I can say it better this way. She sent me the information she had, but she didn't know how to access it. So she found this hidden in the EPA's files. Wrong zip code, wrong spelling of the street name, wrong spelling of the site location, what we call hidden and pinned site, buried, just with enough little errors that the general community can't find it. She sent me the information. And because my background is as a regulatory affairs specialist, I work in the pharmaceutical and biotech and med device manufacturing. I perform audits and regulatory affairs investigation, root cause analysis, and CAT was. Environmental impact is one of the biggest areas we concentrate on and focus on. So I was able to access these files and read them. And for two weeks, I didn't get back to Jen because I was reading these, taking time away from my work. I couldn't stop reading. I was shook, I was shook to my core by what I was reading. All of us grew up here in the 80s and 90s playing in the creek, letting our kids play in the creek, walking through that alley by what was then the Denicol, the Harvester Square site, which is now, I don't want to call it any business names, but no.
Garden Center.
A garden center. We all would walk the path to get to the pumpkin fest and the parade, all of us with our children walking through what we thought was soil. And these files conclusively prove the owner of that site dumped tons and tons of toxic foundry sand full of so much lead, it would be enough to poison the entire city's children. We all walked through it. We all swam in the creek, played in the creek, let our kids play in that creek. I lived down the street from here. Many of my family members lived across the street from this. They died from cancer, severe childhood neurological illnesses that were labeled as behavioral issues or those type of things. Kid next door to where my in-laws lived, 17, he had nasal cancer. Guess what? That's chrome, hexchrome. Hexchrome causes that. I'm trying to keep it together here because this is very personal. When you see the kind of evidence in these EPA files and you have the regulatory background to understand the technical reports, you understand just how devastating this is to our community. And I had to say to Jen, Jen, this is not just the water. What I found was, inside the sub-basement, well, in these files I found, inside the sub-basement of the Denicol building, this toxic foundry sand had been just spread out with a skid steer through the whole facility and had gone down into the sub-basement, into the vault of the old water main. And in the annulus sits currently to this day, a cubic yard of foundry sand packed in and around. What at the time they discovered it was an active water line connecting to the entire city's water, not just water, but water and sewage that was unknown, it's not mapped. At the time, it wasn't known and wasn't mapped. But they discovered it and they pulled up old newspaper articles from the 1890s when it was installed. The city requested a, thank you, what's known as an engineered control. They didn't want to, because the lines were so fragile and so old, they didn't want to risk damaging the water supply by trying to get that out of there. Now, mind you, certain city officials knew about this when the lawsuit was filed, when the residents were coming forward saying, hey, we got lead in our water, where's this coming from? Did anybody come out and tell any of the residents this? Nope. And this was hundreds of residents. I mean, so many residents coming forward and saying this and not one person came forward and said, oh yeah, we, you know what, we did an engineer control, maybe that failed. Maybe we need to have somebody go in there and reassess this. Nobody did that. Instead, the EPA, and I'll say this right now, I definitely hold the EPA responsible for much of this. I'll say it on the record, I'll put my fine, my professional career, the things I read in this report are not according to EPA's own guidelines and the city had a duty to warn us. They did put out two notifications, but they were very generic and very vague. They did not state the contaminants, they did not meet the requirements to notify the public and have the public's participation in making decisions of what was going to happen at this waste site. I've gone way off my script, but the EPA leaned on the lead copper rule. Oh, it's from the residential lines. The lead copper rule, the methodology, is to test the corrosion control methods of the city to ensure that lead lines from the house are not reaching from their own service lines. But with so many residents having no lead in their home and yet testing lead coming up in their test results, and knowing that this was on top of an old water line and had been sitting in the soil, oh, I forgot to say, oh, it drains into Martins Creek and then the Kish. So yay. Yes, I'm sorry, I am so sorry. The technical part of it is, the lead copper rule is not the right, it's not the correct methodology and testing standard for this, source testing is. And there's still lead in the soil. When they were just doing repairs to work on the water line, soil was detected. This is, this needs to be handled, we need soil testing, we need source water testing. I'm not here to sue the city, that's not what this is about. This is to protect lives and let the doctors in the area know what's going on when they see children with these symptoms and people with these symptoms. I'll wrap it up, I'm sorry to take so much of your time. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak to council tonight? Need your name and address, please. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? If not, we'll go forward to consent agenda. Alderman Bauer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including meeting minutes from October 6, 2025, and payment of bills. Tonight, the amount is $1,102,627.69. Over 60% of that is due to a payment on wastewater project.
Second.
Home favor? Roll call, please.
Alderman Stowe.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Kaple.
Yes.
Kosky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Sharad.
Yes.
Okay, that's seven to zero.
Thank you, counsel. We have two appointments tonight. As you all know, Ben Bumpus resigned, he moved away from the city. And I had two people step up that were interested in the seat. And with the council's approval tonight, I would like to have David Stouffer approved for this position.
I'll make a motion.
Second, then?
First and second. Conversation?
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back.
Welcome back.
Roll call, vote, please.
Alderman Stowe.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Kaple.
Absolutely.
Kosky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Hundred percent.
Sharad.
Yes.
Okay, that's seven to zero.
Thanks, David, for stepping up, appreciate it. The other appointment tonight is Marvin Barnes to the Regional Planning Commission. Just need to go through a formal with this, my appointment.
Your appointment, but I think a motion would be appropriate.
Okay, counsel, I need a motion to have Marvin go on the Regional Planning Commission, otherwise one of you guys are going to have to. First and second, roll call, vote, please.
Who's second? Okay, got it.
Did I vote?
Alderman Stowe.
Yes.
Skip Barnes.
I'm staying.
There you go. Bauer.
Yes.
Kaple. Okay. Kosky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Sharad.
Yes.
Okay, that's six to zero with one extension.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Marvin, for stepping up on that also. Presentations of petitions and proclamations. Tonight, we have a presentation by the DeKalb County Convention and Visitor Bureau, Michael. All, please. Yeah, so Courtney Strohacker is here tonight, she wanted to present about the visitor bureau. She has a presentation to. She did go to sleep.
It did go to sleep.
Be sure to turn on the.
Hello, team. Well, I just want to thank you guys so much for your courage, for coming over tonight. That was, yeah, I admire that a lot. And I'm also raised my kids here in Sycamore and so am very proud also of city council for always listening and taking the time to hear from our community too, as a side note. Again, I am Courtney Strohacker, I'm Executive Director of the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And so this is going to be a lot different than the last people you heard from because we're really passionate and excited about what we do. So we're going to kind of change the mood here a little bit for you. I did bring my team members with me. I have Catherine McLaughlin, who is our Marketing Director, and Brad Hoy, who is our Special Projects Manager. So hopefully, you all remember from year after year, there's only a few new faces tonight, that we are the county's only DMO or Destination Marketing Organization. We work on behalf of our stakeholders and our partners, so you all. We get funding from private municipalities like yourselves, from the county government, and then also private partners that we work with, like the Egyptian Theater, Whiskey Acres, and other attractions and venues like that. We welcome teams that come in, we work with sports directors, meeting operators, travelers. Most recently, you'll see a slide in here a little bit, we had international travelers to Sycamore that I know Michael made everyone aware of because we talked about that at DCEDC. Our communities, obviously, that we cover are not just DeKalb and Sycamore, they're all 14 communities of DeKalb County. So often, if you try to find us in our office, we're not there because we are out and about all over the county trying to cover as much as we can. And as a Destination Marketing Organization and a Certified Bureau, it's really our goal, which is different than like your Chamber of Commerce or your Main Street organizations, we promote and market DeKalb County to 55 miles and out, not just like centrically located. So it kind of sets us apart a little bit different from some of the organizations that you're probably more commonly used to hearing from. So our staff, which I did introduce you to two of our members that are here, is small. We like to say we're small but mighty, we have two full-time people, myself and Catherine. And then Brad is part-time and our Marketing Assistant Alexis Aviles, who started as an intern from NIU, is our Marketing Assistant and doing a spectacular job. Our board members, we try to make sure are from all over the county as well as from all different areas. Our board members, um, we try to make sure are from all over the county as well as from all different areas of, um. Uh, our attractions and different hospitality venues. So the Hotel Motels, John Mack Orchard, uh, NIU, the Egyptian Theater. And we were really, um, sad to lose Ben. He was our treasurer, also your alderman. And he was really a great board member. He was really supportive. He was involved, um, took on the role as treasurer. And so that we were sad to see him go, but I'm sure Mayor Braser is going to appoint someone new and fabulous to our board. Uh. You can just kinda see some of our other members there. So Illinois Tourism is big business and to talk a little bit about numbers is our number specialist, Mr. Brad Hoy.
Me as a number specialist, that's a little bit scary. Um, but, um, it is big business and we've kinda showed you these numbers, we've shown you these numbers in past years. Uh, but, uh, it seems like the last several years, remarkably after COVID, uh, the state of Illinois is setting records for tourism. Uh, forty-five point eight billion visitor expenditures. Um. This is the, the state numbers. And one of the, I think, the most important, uh, figures up there, and I'm glad that the state has kinda singled this out, is that. Travel and tourism in the state of Illinois saves the average household because of people coming in from either out of state or from the region. An average of twelve hundred and sixty-three dollars a year. That is significant. That's big business and that's important. Why, uh, travel tourism is important to the state of Illinois. And, uh, exciting enough. So last year, twenty twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-four million, just a little bit more than we had in twenty twenty-three. But that is a new record. So we're very, very excited about that. And the other great thing about it is that through travel, tourism, events, hospitality, seven hundred and eleven jobs were, uh, created. Uh, and that there's even more that are sustained by having travel and tourism within, uh, DeKalb County. And, uh, as Courtney said, we're small but mighty. There are thirty-nine Destination, Certified Destination Marketing Organizations within the state. And that's important because, uh, we are, work with the Illinois Office of Tourism. So by whatever money that we bring in from our municipalities and from our, the private sector to support the organization, we get a match from the state. So, um, we are among the smaller ones, not only in staff, but also in size. But like we said, we're small but mighty and we punch well above our weight. A lot of that has to do with the great support that we get from our municipalities, that we get from county government, but also through NIU. You know, we're very lucky that we have a major state research university within our community. And that contributes, contributes greatly to having events, to having, uh, meetings and sports tourism. Let's see if there's more money. Alright, so now I'm gonna give it over to our outstanding Marketing Director and Sycamore native, Catherine McLaughlin.
She's a small business owner as well.
Um, thanks, guys. Uh, so this was our visitor's guide for this year. We're currently working on our new one, which will come out in January. Um, but we print thirty thousand copies, which are then distributed. Uh, throughout our C T M kiosk program, um, we pay them to then distribute our guides throughout all of Illinois, different hotels. Um, we're in Chicago, at Navy Pier. We're also in parts of Iowa and Wisconsin. Uh, we also, since we are a Certified Bureau, we, um, get access to the Illinois Tourist Information Centers, um, so the T I Cs. So, uh, we have guides in all of those stops throughout the state of Illinois. And then we also, um, have a great relationship with them. So if it's ad week or, um. Different weeks that we're celebrating National Tourism Week or something like that, we can go in there. We can set up a booth and visit with those tourists that are passing by. Uh, furthermore, being part of a Certified Bureau, we're part of then Illinois Destinations Association. It's all the same thing. Um, and again, allows us to collaborate with the other thirty-nine bureaus, uh, throughout the state of Illinois. Um, we're able to go to lobby day together, um, and we are a part of the Illinois May Program. So last year, we were able to bring in Sub Seventy Golf, um, Angie Sugarwood's Bakery, Imperial State Winery. In that, and then, okay. And so here are some of the numbers too, um, that I pulled for you guys with our partnership with, um, DCEDC. We have access to Placer AI. And so, um, I know it's kinda small, but the map on there is the heat map. So that's everyone where people are coming from. Um, just within kinda that state of the, the state of Illinois and then a little bit of Wisconsin. But you can see, um, I mean, we're attracting people from all over. Uh, we have a lot of people clearly to moving throughout the county. So coming from, um, you know, Genoa Sandwich, DeKalb, coming into Sycamore. Um, some of the numbers then to, uh, last year from August to July, it was, I believe, I can't see that far, but, um. Close to nine hundred thousand. And then on the side too, uh, on this right-hand side, I pulled just the Pumpkin Fest numbers from the last two years. So on that top right, and you guys can, I mean, we can forward you this presentation. But, um, those top two numbers, so it was twenty twenty-three and there was about thirty-seven thousand visitors coming in from that Tuesday to the following Monday. And then in twenty twenty-four, it was, uh, forty-two thousand. And so like in twenty twenty-four, the forty-two thousand people that came in here, thirty thousand of them were visitors.
Just so everyone knows, Placer AI is like a software program and it's all, uh, based on mobile data. So all of this information, yes, you're being followed and then you know where you are, where you've been and where you're going. So, um, but we're really fortunate. This software is nothing that we would be able to afford on our own. And since we do collaborate with DCEDC so much, we work together with them and they, um, allow us to kinda go in and grab some of this for our attractions and venues. Like if, uh, MVPs wanted to know, you know, where their people are coming from so that they could really promote or market to that area to bring those people in more. They would be using their, you know, money more wisely. Um, so we would be able to be like, hey, yeah, well, we can help you. We'll pull that for you. So it's really a great partnership that we have.
Yeah, it tracks where they, I mean, not only the town that they came from, but then where people are going before they're reaching their destination and then where they're going immediately after their destination. Uh, okay, so then we also partnered with Adara again this year and Illinois Office of Tourism. So we put in, uh, five thousand dollars, uh, the Illinois Office of Tourism matched five thousand dollars and then Adara also matched that five thousand. So it was a fifteen thousand dollar campaign and we were able to target people looking for hotel rooms. Uh, not only within our area, if they were in, if they were searching DeKalb County and they didn't book, they would be targeted multiple times for ads. But not only that, if they were searching Rochelle, Aurora, Elgin, we were also targeting them then multiple times to come to our hotels instead of saying wherever they were looking. Uh, we have a new website that launched two years ago now. It's great, but you can, uh, search and you can do. Uh, search for anything that we have, obviously, within the county, but you can also narrow it down by each community or, um. If you're looking for recreation or an outdoor facility or anything like that. So. And our events calendar, I mean, is top-notch. It's pretty much the best thing out there, so.
It is the most inclusive.
Uh, and so I also wanted to share with you some of our website statistics. Um, we had. I did the key. I don't remember. I'm sorry, guys. I can't see the numbers, but I remember most of them. Uh, close to two hundred thousand views on there then. And this was just, um, January one until now, so it's not even a full year then. And then I also did the, uh, keyword for Sycamore. So again, it has to, has to have the keyword in there, um, as far as Sycamore goes. It wouldn't just grab by location. But you can see in there, um, Pumpkin Fest was one of the biggest ones. But then we're also helping out too, I think, like the, the tenth one was, um, Sycamore's, the Jewelry Coin Shop. So a lot of the places that don't have a bigger website or need help with their website, um, we're helping them then having that listing on our website so that people can get the information that they're looking for.
Sure. So again, a collaboration, um, with Ramp and then DCEDC as well as the Egyptian Theater. One of the things that we are really trying to work on is making sure that DeKalb County is accessible to everyone. Um, and not only like ADA with, uh, ramps and those sorts of things or, you know, elevators, but also, uh, for visual, for hearing. Um, and Ramp does a great training, uh, that is typically charges. And so we paid half and DCEDC paid half. Um, so that it would be free to everyone that came. And we had partners from Elgin come, from Rockford come, from, um, all over. And then Jessica, who's the, their Executive Director at Ramp, just did. Uh, training down, uh, at our IDA down in Danville this past week. So for all of the different, uh, Visitors Bureaus across the state of Illinois. So we're really proud of that and a lot of people, um, really got a lot out of it. So much so that we did a second one on accessibility just for social media. Um, which was really great and we all came away with so much more knowledge. And so really trying to make sure that. We don't just say that everyone is welcome, but that truly everyone does feel welcome. And then we're back to your social media, man.
So if you're not following us, you should be. Uh, we're on Facebook, Instagram and, uh, TikTok are our most popular social media channels. Uh, and then each year too, during March, we've done our March Madness Bracket Challenge, which, uh, is always a really fun hit with people not only, um. Out of the area and, and tourists coming in, but also our residents like to go to each places, uh, and then we make. They can do their own bracket too, so that's a sheet and then they can fill it out. They don't just have to follow along on social media. I pulled some of the Sycamore features that we had for you guys, um, and then recently too, just because Pumpkin Fest is right around the corner here. Uh, we pulled the ad that we're running. So we'll do, um.
Can I just say, we all really take a big hit too because she makes us be in all of them. And I don't know if you can see that one of me putting, putting salt on my corn at the steam show, but I got so much flack for putting too much salt on my corn in the steam show. It took it a little, it was a little personal.
It was a good, it was a good forty thousand views of people saying, that is way too much salt on that lady's corn.
And, and we like to have Brad be in all of our videos too. So yes, yeah. We, we could use some new actors though. So if anybody is free and wants to be in a TikTok, let us know.
Um, but yes, with Pumpkin Fest around the corner, uh, we do do some paid advertising, um, for that as well, for certain events or, um, certain attractions. Uh, and so as you can see, there were at about thirty-three thousand views on it. We received an international grant through the state of Illinois this year. And with that money, we were able to purchase three different kiosks. And those kiosks are going to help, uh, students at Home Student Centers so that they're not just blindly going into DeKalb or Sycamore or any of our communities. But so that they can see what's around them, um, it's able to translate anything they can turn it into. We had it set for the top eight languages spoke on campus. Um, and that was really our international tie-in. And then, uh, we were also able to utilize them throughout our community as well. Um, so right now we have one at John Mack Orchard. We have one at the Egyptian Theater. Um, and then we have, uh, Home Student Center. And then we've had it at Home Two Hotel. And then at the end of October here, we'll put it in the Convocation Center for all the big, um, cheer and dance programs and all the winter sports that are going on, uh, there. Um, so as you can see, that bottom right is the kiosk itself. It's, um, standing up. And then we have a selfie frame on there, which is. Basically of the photo booth. So that kinda attracts people to it and then they can go on and find out whatever they're looking for. Uh, as Courtney mentioned, we had our, the IPW tour group come in, uh, this June and it was visitors from, uh, over sixteen different countries. Uh, around the world and. That was, it was amazing to have them come in here. They stopped, we had them, the big bus came in and they stopped at Blooming Gardens to start. And then we took them to, uh, the Elwood House and then ended at Whiskey Acres. And the feedback that we got, everyone had such a fabulous time. They were so impressed with. And every time we bring in tour groups here, honestly, everyone can speak on the passion behind each place that they visit. So when they visit Blooming Gardens, the passion that Joel speaks behind everything that he says, when they go to the Egyptian Theater and just hearing. Whatever one has to say, just they don't wanna leave, which I love because that's, that's DeKalb County and that's the small town and that's the small community. And that's what makes everything so great and to come visit here. Uh, so then I also go, that tour sheet right there is, um, I go to different, um, basically tour networking and speed dating events to get. Um, group tour leaders to come and visit us here. Our Out and About app that we've paired, um, with the History Center with, uh, again, if you don't have it, you should. And it's amazing, not only for tourists, but also, um, our schools really utilize that content. Sports planning.
Back to Brad.
Back to Brad.
And again, I mean, we have some areas of special, but we all work together, obviously, because we have to. We're, we're a small group. And I think we're very complimentary each other, but, uh, um, obviously I worked thirty years at, uh, NIU. And, uh, worked a lot with intercollegiate athletics and sports during my time as a professional. So, um, sports tourism is one of the biggest things that's happening in tourism altogether. And, uh, we're very, very fortunate in DeKalb County, even though we're only a little bit over a hundred thousand residents. But we have great infrastructure to support, uh, our sports tourism. Uh, the Park District here in Sycamore, uh, the community has invested in that. And, uh, the events that they have, they're bringing tourists or bringing sports tourism teams such as Storm Days from all over the state. And all over the region. And that's important because they're going to our restaurants, they're multiple day events, they're going to, and they're staying in our hotels for multiple days. And that brings in economic development into our community. Um, we just recently, uh, were informed that the Illinois Elementary School Association, I E S A, not I H S A. Which we, remember, we hosted the football championships in past years, but the wrestling championships have been held at NIU for, since nineteen ninety-nine. And we were just informed that they will be there for another three years. That's big. Because it is very competitive, uh, for these bids and they have found a home in, for youth wrestling here in DeKalb County. And obviously with the great teams that we've had in DeKalb and Sycamore, Sandwich, uh, over the years, um, really supports that. So we're excited to have that. Another exciting development along with, uh, in conjunction with I E S A Wrestling. Is that starting next year, twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, uh, that there will be, uh, girls wrestling championship. And that will be held in conjunction with the boys wrestling championship. So it extends the event an additional day. That means more people coming to our community, more people staying in our hotels and going to, uh, and going to our restaurants. So very excited to have that. Uh, cheer and dance is also big here. So, um. All of November, three out of the five weekends of November, I'm sorry, four out of the five weekends in November, there'll be a cheer and dance competition at the Convocation Center. We just would love to have more. And then, uh, this was a recent event and I think, um, what we can both talk, kinda talk about it. So. Uh, the Makers on the Move, uh, this was, I know a number of you might have been out there, uh, I believe it was a week ago or a couple of weeks ago. Uh, at the Suitor Company, um, this is the, uh, Illinois Manufacturer Association. They make a junket. They go to all the different communities. Uh, throughout the state, they made a stop in Sycamore and were there for a few hours. But we had representation from, from Sycamore High School, uh, there. We had, uh, we were there for the CDB. DCEDC was there along with, uh, I think NIU to showcase some of the things that we're doing with manufacturing. Um, but, uh, they were, uh, it was great to have the Suitor Company, uh, be the site because it's their hundredth anniversary. And, uh, and there was also some awards that were being handed out as well.
Senator Resin was there, um, yeah, Representative Piker. It was great. And I M A, the Illinois Manufacturing Excellence Center, partners with I M A. Um, and it's really a big deal to get chosen to be able to have a stop. So this was, it was really big. And they were so impressed with Sycamore High School. Um, if you know Mark Denzler, who is the head of I M A, um, does like a Fantastic Five every week. And he has a huge following on all of his social media. And he put this whole thing on just how impressed he was with Sycamore High School. And the steam, uh, program that you have there, especially all the young women that were involved and were out there that day. So, um, it was, it was made me really proud just to even be there and have that, have that covered so well. And then, of course, the Suitor Company being such a leader in manufacturing and the treatment of their employees and everything that they do. So, um, we're doing amazing things here in DeKalb County and I think we just all really need to be proud of it. We're really proud to represent and promote and market DeKalb County, um, and so proud to collaborate with everyone. And hopefully you can see that your investment gets tripled, uh, or quadrupled in all the things that we're able to do with it. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. If we covered everything. Usually Steve likes to throw me like a ringer or something, right?
Oh, no. The other way around. You don't want me to talk tonight.
Comes the ringer.
Uh-oh. Okay.
For the numbers guy, um, you know, the numbers for tourism in Illinois are impressive. Uh, but we know that a lo, a large portion of that is from the city of Chicago. Uh, do you have any numbers that parse out the, the Chicago and how the state, downstate stacks up?
Absolutely. And we can share those with you. So we.
Absolutely. And we can share those with you. So we, we gave, provided the number one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four million this year are passed in twenty twenty-four for DeKalb County. So they have the numbers for every single county on their travel and tourism numbers. And yes, Chicago, obviously, because it's an international city, we're very, very lucky to have it. But one of the things that we're trying to double down on, because we're in a, you know, roughly an hour, an hour plus away from Chicago, we're trying to draw, that's a great marketing area for us. So when we're marketing to fifty-five miles and more, all around and all direction from DeKalb County, a lot of our stuff is going into that Chicago area for obvious reasons. And, and the state also makes a vast, huge investment in that. But of course, this year, or I should say in twenty twenty-six, the big thing is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. We're very much involved with the DeKalb County History Center in promoting that throughout the county, but also through the respective municipalities within the county. There's many events that are going on and they're all being planned. Some are already going on, they're ongoing, just to accentuate some of the celebrations that we already have within our own respective communities. And then also there's the Route sixty-six, they're celebrating a hundredth anniversary. So there's a lot of marketing dollars from the state going to that particular initiative. We're trying to kind of siphon some of that stuff off here because we have a state highway that goes right down the middle of town here in Sycamore, but also the Lincoln Highway in DeKalb and Route thirty-eight, just a few miles to the south. So we're, have some initiatives that will highlight those, hopefully get some of those travelers that will be doing that Route sixty-six experience through Illinois to also come our way here in DeKalb County.
And agritourism is huge right now. And so that is a great thing for us in DeKalb County. So we're really trying to take advantage of that and get some of those city, you know, people to come out and really experience it. One of the biggest things during the international travelers were here was seeing a combine. I mean, things that we take for granted, they don't see all the time. They didn't know how corn grew. I mean, they were just so excited to be a part of it and, you know, go to Syngenta and see, you know, some of the things. So we have a lot, like again, like I said, really to be proud of. I think we just take it for granted because we're used to being here and we're used to seeing combines are getting annoying to them going down the road and we have to go around them.
Courtney?
Yeah.
I notice you have a mural listing. I'm hoping that our mural on the wall of the state, Sycamore State Theater will be added in your January issue?
Sure.
As a location?
We've done, yeah, we've done a post on it too, but yes, it will.
Because that, that's also commemorating the theater's one hundredth anniversary. So if it could be in your January publication?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, the cover is featuring the monument in Sycamore.
If I may to the council, I know I wasn't sworn in, but I will say that the DCCDB as an organization, against other organizations that are of comparable niche or purpose, have been eager and in sort of knocking on our door to give us access to data and transparency and make our business better. They're an active participant in multiple businesses that, that I know and interact with. And I can say that every dollar spent towards this organization, even though myself, you know, there's no membership for me as a business owner, everything that they've done has quadrupled in return. So just another big support as a small business owner.
Quadruple of nothing. Thank you. And try to be constructive with you guys, you need to tighten up your presentation. Anybody else? Questions, comments, answers? Have a good night. For your support. Year-to-date budget report, Michael Hall, please. Counsel, any questions on the year-to-date? We'll go on, there's no public hearings, there's no ordinance resolutions. Resolution number ten twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the execution of an extension to the lease agreement between the city of Sycamore and what we're going to call it CASA, court-appointed special advocates for Suite three oh one in the Sycamore Center, Michael Hall, please.
And this is just a new lease effective October first, actually. CASA will be paying three fifty per month with an annual adjustment to the CPI.
Counsel, any questions on that? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve resolution number one zero two one.
We'll call both, please.
Oliver Stowe?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Fauer?
Yes.
Couple?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sharra?
Yes.
Okay, that's a good one.
Considerations, consideration of a request to increase the parking ticket fee from one to ten dollars, Michael Hall, please.
If you remember a few meetings back, we talked about one of the things I'm going to be looking at this year is fees and fines. And this is just one of those things, areas that we looked into. We examined parking fines and determined that the administration enforcement, processing, and maintenance meters currently are being subsidized by other tax revenue. And the existing one-dollar fine does not adequately cover the costs associated with managing the parking system. So increasing that ensures the costs are appropriately borne by those who violate the parking regulations rather than the general taxpayer. So that's why we did an assessment from the Finance Department and assessed that moving it to ten dollars would make more sense. So staff recommends approval and if there's any questions.
Counsel, any questions on this?
You have a couple.
Please.
So I guess what's the purpose of the parking enforcement program? So the reason why we have parking, we need parking around, is that what your question is? Yeah, so what we're doing is we try to keep the flow of parking moving. So all of these vendors or all of these shops and stores and restaurants, if we didn't do that, you'd end up having people just park there all day long. In fact, we do have occasions where people do that and take the dollar fine and just say, "I'd rather pay a dollar a day than, than pay the dime or the penny or the nickel," whatever it may be for the fine. So we do have occasional people doing that, but really it's to keep the flow of traffic moving, especially around the courthouse and all around here. And if we don't, there's people that live above and that's not parking for them either. So it's really to keep that flow going so that people come shop and move around. Okay. And then, so the equipment, the radio and the computer supplies, so it's the six thousand dollars. So is that a, is that a one-time cost or is that ongoing? That's ongoing. So those are all ongoing costs, plus the maintenance of those, those meters. Another thing about the meters, I talked to the administrative sergeant, LoJack, and he said that we probably have about two years left of parts available. So in two years, we're going to have to find either more of those, which I doubt that we will, or we're going to have to replace it with something else. And that'll probably come later on. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that was, well, that was one of my questions because I know a lot of, a lot of parking meters are now digital because a lot of times I'm assuming people don't put money in there because they don't have coins. Like, I don't carry coins naturally. So that thirty tickets per, per day, is that, like, how did you, how did you come to that number? Is that like over year over year or is that? That's an average. Depending on enforcement level of the person doing the work, it's a part-time position. It went from two part-time people to one part-time person about two years ago, so now it's just one part-time. The new person started and she has done, found a lot. In fact, the first day I think she did her job, she found over fifty in the first day that she did her four hours work. So I think people got the signal and they're moving around more because they knew that there was no parking enforcement for a, for a few months while we had that vacancy. Okay. My last question. So what happens, so what happens if she continues to do her job, we get less and less tickets? And then we're not getting the thirty, what is it, thirty, thirty a day? Yeah, the bare minimum we need, I think, is two a day in order to sustain the, or support itself at ten dollars. So we don't need two a day in order to support it. So that's why we did it at that amount. So right now we probably, we anticipated that, we anticipated that she's not going to get thirty a day. Soon people are going to realize it's now ten dollars if we reduce that. So two a day, we'd be able to sustain it. If it doesn't, then other taxes will have to support that. And then the surplus, does it go into the camera fund? Yes, it goes to the general fund and goes for maintenance of, of the meters themselves or eventually the replacement.
So is this just a penalty for the meters?
Correct.
Okay, what is a penalty of, so I assume like someone parking in a no parking zone, it's a much higher fee, the ticket?
Well, depends on what you're talking about. So in no parking zone for example. A fire hazard is different?
Or a handy, well, handicap, we know is very expensive.
That's, that's two hundred and fifty dollars for a handicap?
So there is, so what we're talking about here is just the parking meter?
Correct. Just the parking meters, correct. Yeah.
I guess I should have checked in advance, but what is the revenue we're taking from parking meters?
So currently seventy-five hundred?
The one in the nimble?
Oh, it's in the nimble, he said.
Oh.
So I have to. Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Right here, seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred.
A deficit of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand.
Yeah, thank you, Margaret.
No.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Current fee a dollar per ticket and seventy-five hundred tickets equals seventy-five hundred?
Right, seventy-five hundred dollars a year.
What about all the pennies?
That's, that's, that's everything.
One or two grand a month maybe?
Yeah, one or two grand.
A month?
Yes.
As I say that, I mean, I think we should cover our costs when we're taking in twenty-four thousand dollars a year. All right. So it's a sixty-one thousand dollar loss, you're taking seventy-five hundred. You've got about twenty-eight thousand dollars there that are collected. So we don't need the full ten, is what I'm saying.
Well, we were anticipating a change and that also fluctuates, not a guaranteed thousand dollars. In fact, that, or excuse me, pennies or nickels or that, depending on what they put in there. So that, that's just an average, that's not a daily. So we are, we are taking loss and other tax revenues are supporting that.
I, I, I see that. What I'm saying is the amount we're raising doesn't need to be the full ten dollars because we're taking in revenue on top of this.
Yeah, the reason why we did it to ten dollars is because we only need two a day in order to sustain it. So we're anticipating people getting the message that it's not a dollar anymore. In fact, many of the people around the courthouse don't just take the dollar hit and just park there all day long. So that is the change. Hopefully that'll get people moving and that will change and that will improve or less.
This is another one of those things that seems like goes around, we have a bad habit of not keeping up with it. You know, it seems like we're in the process of trying to update the fee schedules every year, which should be done. So here we are, charging a dollar, and I think it used to be a quarter. So we quadrupled that, you know, it's not a big deal, a quarter or a dollar. But again, we haven't made adjustments over time, again, you know, just like we talk about sometimes ambulance fees where we don't make any adjustments and all of a sudden it goes from, you know, eight hundred dollars a ride to twenty-four hundred dollars a ride. And it's a big hit. I think we should do this on a more regular basis. I realize that you probably have to have some expense for pretty new tickets because you're changing the dollar amount. But it seemed like from one to ten, I don't know, I'd have stopped at five, but.
And consider, I, I always think about other municipalities where I let a meter run out and I've got a thirty-five dollar ticket or a fifty dollar ticket. I mean, this is still working at ten dollars.
Mark?
To piggyback on it, well, they should just, especially if you're just paying a penny, a nickel, a dime. But I have a couple other things, just I made some notes on, and that is on every meter, there used to be the times that you have to feed the meter. I can't find them anywhere on any of the meters. So I'm recommending that at least we put signs up on posts around towns like other municipalities do to let people know what the meter times are. And then also if we're going to especially increase this to ten bucks, if it's approved, to put that sign, those signs up to let people know that if you don't pay the meter, if it gets passed, you're going to pay ten bucks. You know, because I think most people, even out of town people are used to, you know, just paying it out. So I think it's important, and I think it'd be important for us to put it on our website, you know, as much as we can to let everybody know. My other question is that it seems to me, and I'm trying to recall from memory, if our current fine is a dollar, but if you don't pay it in seven days, it increases to something, is that, is that, is that true?
Fifteen days it can go, it can go up to twenty-five actually.
So that will just be from ten to twenty-five then?
Right.
Okay, that's why I was, I was worried, I was worried that it was up to, after fifteen days it was ten without, we should have increased that also. But it's twenty-five, it's fine. And I think that's what I got. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to go the other way. I propose to take the meters out altogether. It's a nine to four, it's not a nine to four town anymore, it's a four to nine town. So should we be having the meters in there from nine to nine? I was a downtown business owner for many years, as a lot of you guys know. And I think it's become obsolete. I've seen downtowns that have been wrecked because of the meters. Lake Geneva just had a huge increase up there if you go downtown. They're using the free lots out of there and the downtown business people are complaining about it. So now they laxed it back to the off-season, they're not charging people anymore. But I do know that people do not come down here for lunch because they worry about the meters. You know, I, I do believe that overnight parking still has to be enforced. But the, the way the meters are now, isn't it nine to four, is all their nine to five?
Five.
Nine to five? There's more cars down here from five to nine, maybe we're approaching this the wrong way. All the restaurants are packed down here. But, you know, a lot of downtowns don't have them anymore. And we have a lot of free parking in the community. You know, the biggest problem has always been the courthouse and that's basically what court days are Tuesday. And pretty much that's the only day you see a pull-down here. And they, like you said, they don't care, they just keep coming in here and stuff too, even though the courthouse has put in parking for them. So I mean, I, that, that's another way I'd like to look at it too and just see what, if we eliminated all that, just had some signage up about that, maybe it's the advantage for the business to have them up there. But just another thing to think about and something that maybe we should do a cost analysis on. I think a one to ten jump is huge. Hard, hard to justify that. I think even to the existing businesses downtown here, that they know that their clients would have a ten dollar fee instead of a one dollar.
Did anybody ask the Chamber of Commerce what they think?
No. Well, this was published, I was surprised I didn't get a call from them. I only heard from one businessman downtown that they thought it was steep. And, and would, would that kind of surprise me too. But we already, how many parking lots do we have here in town? Four, you know, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
Didn't Sycamore used to have a downtown virtual association?
Yeah.
Years ago.
It's called the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I know, but wasn't there a branch of it or something?
Well, it's kind of what Discover Sycamore started, but, no, it was the Chamber, you know, it's.
I think they have like a little segment from the downtown virtual, you would know for.
No, there was nothing I'm aware of that I belong to or anything like that, but.
Virginia had a question?
Yes, Virginia.
I was just wondering, what do the businesses downtown think of the working?
Well, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't come to us. You know, this, this was, this was posted, but I didn't hear from any of them. So I mean, I think that is something we have to check, the, the businesses, the restaurants, the offices that are down here. The guys have apartments. I've had a few people that talked about renovating their buildings to have nicer apartments upstairs, but then their people don't make place to park.
And I've, I've had calls about that.
So, you know, we wanted somebody to fix up those buildings, we'd have to find a spot for them to park off-street, you know, the back alley back there and sell them spots to make up some of the deficit. So I, I don't, I, I think we need to do a little bit more research on this.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
I have a question then, Mr. Mayor. If we take, if we were to consider taking meters out, then people could park there seven hours, eight hours.
Yeah, they could.
That would deter me from going downtown because I know with meters, someone is bound to pull out.
Well, they don't sit seven or eight hours in the free parking lots.
That's because they're too far away.
Why don't they park in the, instead of a consumer?
In other towns, chalk tires.
They're just spend money.
There's other towns that chalk tires for, you know, two hours and stuff.
Is that going to be a bigger expense?
I don't know. I don't know, but I think we need to look a little bit more into it than just a one to ten.
You know, I also remember the, we were, our penny meters, nickel meters were featured in the Chicago Tribune several years back and.
That was the last time I wanted to get rid of the meters and then it came really.
Really brought Sycamore into the spotlight because to me that's kind of a unique.
Think of Michaelston, how many of us carry around change anymore?
Yeah.
That's three here. I know.
Right in the door of my gift.
If we continue to do it, then it needs to be, they need to be updated to the door.
They take the credit cards, yeah. And if we're only, we're only two years out on having to replace our meters, 'cause I know it's a problem. So, I think it was last time, Joliet offered all their meters to us, when they heard that we still had meters, 'cause those towns took, you know, got out of there, so maybe we're spending our money another way, maybe we should change the meter parking, the way it's done, so. But I, I, you know, you know, if you guys wanna move on it tonight, somebody can make a motion, I don't vote on these things, but I just thought I should put that in there. Council, do we have a motion, or?
I'll make a motion that we table. Um, this...
Prefer the research?
Prefer the research, as you've requested, that gives us more options to look at.
What, what options are you looking for?
Well, what, what the mayor brought up, I mean, got, uh, eliminated totally, um, going to, um, something, since they're gonna expire ten, two years anyway, maybe if, if you wanna have something like that, be proactive and look at having something that we're gonna do right away. I mean, as far as, as far as I can ever remember, and we have two council members that are very veterans, as far as I've ever known, the, the parking meters is running at a deficit for as long as I can ever remember, back to the mayor red days, so. Um, and I never understood why we'd allow that to be a deficit. So, to the mayor's point, I mean, something's gotta be done, I think, whether it's this, or something else, or do the ten dollars, or something, either, but it can't just continue to run at a deficit and have, uh, other revenues support it, so. It makes no sense. So, I mean, I'm, I'm open to other options to look at, and then we can decide which one we like best. So, I'll leave, I'll, I'll leave it to the mayor to, when he'll, he feels comfortable to bring it back, so.
Counsel, any other mentions on that?
I, I guess, I, the only thing to keep in mind, I know, and it doesn't always work, but the reason for the meters was to continue freeing up parking spots.
Absolutely, right.
So that all the employees of all the businesses don't park in front of the businesses, which we know they all do.
Yes, they do. You know, and it was, it was also a sales tax-driven thing too, that, you know, turn that over, the businesses downtown will produce more sales tax. We don't have as much retail down here now as we used to, so that, that's a little bit of a thing, you know, just, it, I, I just think we have to explore other options. I'd like to get the chambers input on it. I thought you put this out here early enough that I'd heard, I'd hear more, and I know The Chronicle put an article up about it, that I thought we'd hear a little bit more, but I think you're making this judgment tonight is a little bit too soon. I have a motion, does anybody else have a motion, or? Alan?
I'll make a motion that we, um, keep the meters and change it to ten dollars.
Second?
First and a second. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Oliverston Stowe?
No.
Barnes?
No.
Bauer?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
No.
Sharad?
Yes.
Okay, that vote is four to three.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, consideration of a recommendation from the engineering department to award a non-competitive bid to Helm Electric for traffic signal improvements. Michael Hall, please.
So, this is a, this non-competitive bid to Helm Electric is for the traffic signal improvements, um, totaling thirty-one thousand, nine sixty. Helm has, has recently received the county's contract for Route sixty-four signal upgrades, which includes installing new signals and GPS time clocks. The city intends to include additional related improvements as part of this coordinated project. Since Helm has already got the, the contract, we're just simply asking that they would make these additional, um, improvements, which equals thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty, staff is recommending, and any questions available?
Yes. I know nothing about how traffic lights are controlled, or what, how, how, what is a GPS clock? How does that work?
Right now, the, the traffic signals operate on a clock that's basically like a wristwatch. And they drift, so if you find that traffic signals aren't lying low, it's the clocks are synchronized. The GPS clock always has the exact same time, so it saves our guys time from going and resetting and synchronizing the clocks, so they'll always be in order.
Okay. And then the, um, controllers are basically?
Controllers are basically the brains of the traffic signal, and the ones that we have now, you can't get parts for. So, we, we've been pricing them up for a couple of years, and this is a, it's a very, it's a good price, and it's the same wor-, same contractor that's doing the other work. So, there, if something does go wrong, there's no finger pointing in the directions.
So, this could perhaps reduce the amount paid for labor of resetting clocks and fixing old equipment and...
Counsel, any other questions?
I had a question.
Yeah.
How confident are we that, um, Helm's price for this extra work is really competitive compared to getting another electrical contractor out, and?
Um, I looked at the prices that we, I looked at the prices that we got in twenty-twenty-one, and it was about, I think, a ten to twelve percent increase per year. Um, there's, the, most of it is the, is the controller itself, and there is, there is a markup on the controller, but it's only about two hours of labor per controller. So, most of that cost is fixed in the controller.
So, counsel, we make a motion, we are, it, it's, it's twofold, correct, Alan?
Yeah, it's a single motion, but...
It's a single motion, but it would also waive the non-competitive bid and approve?
Thirty-one thousand, nine sixty.
Thirty-one thousand, nine sixty.
And it's gotta pass by two-thirds, probably.
What's two-thirds of seven?
Let's do the math after the vote.
So, counsel, do we have a motion on the table for that?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Second?
Roll call vote.
Oliverston Stowe?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sharad?
Yes.
Okay, that vote is seven to zero.
Two-thirds.
Okay. We're glad you're here, then. Consideration, uh, to adjust utility rates for water and sewer for fiscal year twenty-six. Michael Hall, please.
So, if you remember, when we first started the Talking About Budget, uh, this is just another category, GFOA, and then we talked about the general fund, the enterprise funds, and the fiduciary funds, last, last time we talked about fiduciary. So, this is the water and sewer funds. So, the staff is recommending, uh, two-point-seven-five percent increase to the water user fees, the meter maintenance, radium, infrastructure fees, sewer fees. The refuse and recycling fee increases contractual increase with waste management, so that's, that's already figured in there. The average residential customer will see a total increase of water, sewer, and refuse approximately three fifty, three dollars and fifty cents per month, uh, which is about three-point-one percent overall. Uh, the changes are projected to generate, uh, money both for water and sewer for supporting , uh, projects. I think in FY twenty-six, you have about five-point-nine million dollars planned for capital projects for water and sewer. Um, it also will do IPS upgrades, uh, new SCADA system, which is what tracks what's going on in the system, uh, new tractor trucks, uh, vehicles, um, that sort of thing, and that's all included in that, in that CIP projects for this. Also, just to remind you that the enterprise funds are run like businesses, unlike the general fund and others, so they are, whereas the general fund is, has to be, um, balanced budget, meaning revenues and expenditures have to be equal. That's not the case with enterprise funds, they're to run, uh, with a profit, and that profit is used for future projects. Uh, and so that's why you'll see, that's why you see the increases there, and those projects will be coming forward, just like we are doing in FY twenty-six, we have a five-point-nine million dollars plan. Uh, also remember that we have over two-hundred miles of water and sewer piping out there, so if you just think about two-hundred miles, that's a lot that we, that we're responsible for in replacing, so. Um, staff is recommending this increase, um, and we're available for any questions.
Counsel, any questions on that?
No questions, but comments that I got from people in my ward saying, no, please, don't, don't let it, we're done, we're tired of paying. So, there, there was this one fee that we put in, and they're like, why do we have that fee? And I'm like, oh, that's what we need. I think it's the infrastructure for this.
Anyone else?
Can you talk into your microphone, so we can hear?
Oh.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Alan?
Yeah, um, we're down to, um, two tiers now, right?
Correct.
So, in the past, we had, like, seven tiers, and we had, there was a, an ordinance that reduced it.
Correct.
Over time, and now we're down to two tiers.
Yes, it's less than a thousand units in building cycle, or greater.
When are we gonna go down to one tier?
Uh, right now, it's the two, it's still the two.
And then we're gonna go down to one tier, 'cause it, it's, you know, it's a valuable resource, and to, uh, to lower price for the people that use the most does, is pretty, I don't know, counterproductive for our son's concern.
Counsel, any other comments?
So, the increase is three-point-one percent, right?
Yeah, it's water, sewer, and, uh, recycling, and garbage. Yes, the total amount is three-point-one percent per month, three dollars and fifty cents on an average.
So, the services have, so the services have increased five-point-three percent, right? Am I reading that right, or?
So, uh, so the water and sewer is two-point-seven-five percent increase. If you include the, the refuse and recycling, which is a contract that we have to go up by that amount, the total amount is three-point-one cents overall, which is three dollars and fifty cents total with all three of those things. So, recycle, uh, garbage recycling, one, but water and sewer. So, the total is three-point-one percent with those, two-point-seven-five percent is water and sewer.
Yeah, water and sewer are proposing to go up two-point-seven-five percent. The waste management for garbage collection, that contract, that's a four-point-five, that's for the next four years, I think, later. So, when you combine them all together, the average utility bill inclusive of garbage would be three-point-one percent. That, I apologize.
Counsel, any other questions?
Can I ask a question?
No. Sorry, cannot, but thank you. If not, I need a motion. We don't have a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion and approve the change, the three-point-one percent change.
Is that reading?
As outlined in the background.
Thank you. And first, can I have a second? First and a second. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Oliverston Stowe?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Koppel?
No.
Koski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sharad?
Yes.
Okay, that vote is six to one.
Counsel, any other new business?
Mr. Mayor, I have two, um, one is a constituent called me and asked if we had anything in our ordinances about electric bikes. Can they drive on the sidewalk? Can they drive on the street? And I looked, and I saw nothing there referring to electric bikes, so...
Yeah, they're, they're not allowed, but it's actually a state, uh, requirement. Well, they're, I guess, depends on where you're, where you're riding, but yeah, the bikes and electric bikes or any vehicles are not allowed on the sidewalks. Are they doing it, I'm sure? But that would require, obviously, enforcement is usually the problem with most things.
So, that's a state?
Well, depending on what sidewalk you're talking about. For example, twenty-three out here, that's a state highway, so that is definitely restricted by them, but are also other sidewalks that are not, not included in that. You're not supposed to be driving bikes or, um, electric vehicles or, or electric scooters or anything like that.
But we don't have anything in our ordinance that refers, people are trying to get the information.
Sure.
That's all I'm saying, is, is, is it something we, we need to add to our UVO in terms of, because there is bicycles and toys and, but there was nothing about, and they're becoming more and more popular.
Yeah, um...
And they can be very heavy, and they can go pretty fast. So, if we say, oh, sure, residential, they can go on the sidewalk, it's no problem. You put not on state, or, or State Street, yeah. Um, this is a concern, people just are trying to find out what the rules are.
We can, we can look into that.
See if we can do that, okay.
I'll, we'll look into it further.
Okay, thank you. The other question, Michael, you had sent out information about the changes here in City Hall, moving offices and that sort of thing. I guess, my, my question is, um, have we looked at what that is going to cost us to make these changes? And if so, does that come before counsel?
Uh, the cost is gonna be minimal, um, and no, it doesn't come before City Hall.
Okay, okay, um, sorry. Because we're always concerned about stretching budget, and the money is there or it isn't there, and now, to me, these sound like they might be significant.
We're talking one door and one window.
Okay. But no, no hookups, or it's all there already for computers and all of that?
One door and one window.
Okay. So, when we come to meetings in the future, can we use the other door, the, the one on State Street?
Yeah, eventually it'll be through State Street, or if you have a key, um, to come through the employee entrance.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other new business? If not, Oliverston Stowe?
Move adjourned.
I'll second.
Meeting closed, seven. All favor?
I, I propose.
Michael, question?
So, this is for...